Mr. Matt Murphy is in. I'm sure you'll be Big Shepherd, he give us a little prayer.
Okay.
I just want to read scripture and then I'll pray at this. Thanks for letting me do this. Paul writes this in 2 Timothy, sorry, 1 Timothy, he says, "First of all, then I urge that supplications, prayers, intercessions, and thanksgivings be made for all people, for kings and all who are in high positions. And we may lead a peaceful and quiet life, godly and dignified in every way. This is good, and it is pleasing in the sight of God our Savior, who desires all people to be saved and to come to the knowledge of the truth." So, Lord, we thank you for this morning. God, I thank you that your mercies are new every day. Great is your faithfulness. I pray, Lord, for everyone in this room, that you would speak through your Holy Spirit and through your word to them today. Let them know who you are. Give them understanding, wisdom, and insight. Guide them in the truth. Let them know that you are the God of creation, who desires to be the God of their own heart and their own lives. I pray for all those who are on this board, in a high position, that you would help them to live a godly life as an individual, in private and in public. I pray that you would help them in their marriage to be dignified, pure, to love their spouse if they're married. I pray, God, that you would help them to lead those under their care and their supervision, that they would do so with great wisdom, great compassion, great justice, and that you would help them to lead us, to live in a way, God, that's pleasing to you. I just pray for your peace in this city with so much going on all over the world. Lord, I pray that you would raise up men and women of peace who could lead and love people well, point people to you. God, we thank you today for your Son, Jesus Christ, who gave himself for all, that all might come to the knowledge of the truth in him. And I thank you for your presence here. Lead this meeting, guide this meeting, help them to do what's just and right, bless their families, their children, their children's children. And I pray for healing, Lord, if there's anybody in this room, Lord, this morning who's battling with sickness, and maybe it's depression or discouragement, fear, anxiety about today, I pray that you would bring comfort and peace and power through the presence of your Holy Spirit in Jesus' name.
Amen.
That's good luck.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First off, we have our public forum, we have our hearing to receive any comments regarding to our redistricting for Harrison County. Yes, one.
Should I present to you or the public? I'm Allison Hawkins with Southern Mississippi Planning and Development District. We were pleased, fortunate, and honored to work on the redistricting this year for the Harrison County Board of Supervisors. As you may recall, we had contracted with them several months ago. Every, just to give you a little bit of background, this won't be long, but every 10 years there's a census, the most recent one done in April of 2020. Of course, we know those were coming during times in our world, so things may not come out exactly the way that everyone thinks their population grew or declined, but Harrison's did, did really increase, and then the census says it increased too. So, that's a good thing for Harrison County. So, we contracted with the Presidential Planning Commission to actually do the map drawing and revisions for us, and then also worked with Tim Holloman and Tricia Tisdale from the Holloman Firm as county attorneys, making sure that we followed all the legal, state, federal guidelines that we needed to follow. The criteria was established that any redistricting plan would follow all those federal and state guidelines, first of all being the U.S. Constitution and the 14th Amendment, which is the one, one voter, one person, one vote, isn't that right? Okay. We also followed the Voting Rights Act of 1965 as amended. One of the other things we wanted to do was make sure that we did not have a deviation of more, plus, it'd be plus or minus 5% in any of the districts. Ken, I will give you a little more detail when he gives you the numbers that we actually started with as a benchmark, and then the actual numbers that you see today on this map. We also made sure that incumbents would all be in individual districts. You can't have two people in one district for the voters. And one of the other main points was that we maintain existing majority-minority district, which is currently held by Mr. Jones. We wanted to maintain the core retention, meaning that we wanted to make as few changes as possible to the map for the purpose of the voter, and having consistency with the voter, and where they are represented, who they're represented by, and just to avoid voter confusion in going to the polls. And finally, we followed any natural geographic boundaries like lines of water, those types of things where we could. So, we presented the benchmark several months back to the board, and then we set up individual meetings. We kind of had a rolling day of workshops with Ken and Tricia and myself, where we went through different revisions of the map, pulling people from one district into another to make sure we meet compliance. So, Ken, if you want to talk about the actual numbers, this is Ken Holland with the Presidential Planning Commission.
Good morning. Thank you for having me here. In our benchmark, the map that we're showing here is an option of a redistricting plan that we're proposing to go forward. It is in draft format until adopted by this board. When we started the plan, Harrison County, we have 208,621 people in the county. The process is pretty simple. You take that whole number, it's not a registered voter or anything like that, it's a total population. You take that number and you divide by five, which gives us our five supervisors' districts, and you come up with an ideal population. That ideal population per district is 41,724 people. So, then that, we create our benchmark case, and that benchmark case, it showed us how our existing population from 20 fell into the districts that we currently operate under. That's how we came up with this deviation percentage. And with that, the deviation in the benchmark actually was, the only two districts that were out of line were District 2 and District 4. District 4 was down about, District 4 was down 5,064 people. District 2 was up, 3,343 people. So, in the exercise, obviously, if those are the two spots that need some work, we looked at those first, and ultimately, we ended up only changing those two districts by taking some population from two and adding it to four, and increasing the goals that Allison had mentioned previously. So, that was the benchmark case. Again, two of those deviations were out, and one was a negative 12.4, the second was a positive 8.01, which got us around over 20%. And remember, as Allison said, our deviation should be about 10%. Five per district is what we shoot for. That's our methodology. So, in the plan that we're now looking at, we came up with a total overall deviation of 6.25. So, that means you would take the, still Supervisor Jones is the lowest, he's down 720 people of the ideal number that we chose, which is the area divided by five. And then we got District 2 Supervisor Power, she's actually down only one person, so she's only one person from perfect in her district, so that's pretty neat. And again, that overall deviation became 6.25, which is 3.75 points below the acceptable tolerance of 10%. That is the plan. We maintained the minority strength in District 4. We had to adjust that somewhat with the changing. The additions, as you can see over there, that are clear, because it's kind of tight down here, we added some area into four from two, right up here, around Three Rivers area, and there were two spots down in town, and one was just an odd spot around this building, actually, where there was one block that was taken in to two, we put that in four, and there was a little island right over here. Allison, you pointed that right there, that was in two, that we added to four, that kind of ran in, and we kind of cleaned up that choke point, making it a little wider. So, the changes that we made were very effective, and we didn't do anything to three, five, or one, which is pretty neat, just the two and four area.
Yeah, the changes were really minimal. The order, whenever it is revised, approved, all of those things, based on our public comment period, then the precinct boundaries will be altered if they need to be, registration books and poll books updated, and then the public, of course, will be informed, especially if they have had any reassignment in their district where they vote.
And we have been working on, again, we know this is the draft, we're working with your department, and trying to get the legals as close as we can to, you know, before the adoption.
Yes, so we appreciate Jane and her group helping to work on those. And the order would take effect on January, January 1st, 2020. So, if we have any questions, we'll take them.
Do we have another hearing?
We did. We have another hearing next Monday in Biloxi on August 8th, and I think Mr. Jones may have wanted to have a hearing in his district, and that's fine, too.
But then we vote.
We haven't said that yet.
Got you.
Yeah, you want to have the actual, yeah, I guess once you vote, then you can present the order, or the order can be drafted with all of the legal prescriptions, which are kind of in draft format now, too, so. But you'll want to do that definitely, I mean, I would do it before November 1st, but I think at that point, everything really needs to be in that system, so that when qualifying happens, you're ready. And Connie will be happy to have that done in Ladner, to be able to.
I think they have something.
Question was, would you do your numbers, is it based on the actual population or registered voter or age to vote population?
It's actually on total populations, numbers.
That's where you get the ideal total population.
Yeah, that's where you get that. Now, there are, you know, other breakdowns you can look at, like voter age and those sorts of things, but actual population.
Hi, boys. It's also done in census blocks.
That's right.
And I think that's confusing to people.
That's right.
They'll have a line that'll, you know, across.
Yeah, in our methodology, you, the Human Census Bureau, they use these, the lowest level of their geography where they aggregate population, which is that public law data, and it's got the minority compositions, it's got the population breakdowns. Those are done in census blocks. In the urban areas, they typically look like city blocks, a lot of them, but as you move out of those urban areas into the more rural areas, they become a lot more disorganized from the geography, physical features where possible, so river, streets, roads, streams. Occasionally, then, we use power lines or easements and rightaways that you might not see from a map as clearly until you go out and look at it, but that's how you, that's the building block of the puzzle piece that we count. And in our methodology that we explain with the board before we get started, is we try in all cases not to have to split those blocks, because if you split a population block that the census put together, you lose the ability to basically calculate the information inside that block. Then it becomes more of a, unless you go out and do field surveys and door-to-door, you really don't know what's happening in these households. So, we try to use the blocks that they've prepared for us to count.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Next up, we're going to recognize Ms. Ashley Frisco, SMPD, to present scholarships to recipient Austin Wiggins, and basically.
On behalf of SMPDD and the Harrison County Board of Supervisors, and Ms. Evelyn Martin, we have two very special students to recognize today, and they'll both be receiving $1,000 in donations in the legal case, you may be counted.
So, we have Mr. Austin Wiggins and Ms. Stacy Wade, please. Austin's a current student at Deuphille High School, just graduated, I'm sorry, and the same with Ms. Stacy, and he's looking at nursing school, or are you looking at nursing school? We're going to have lots of nurses. So, y'all come right up and take a little picture. Don't mind. SMPDD.
I'll do one.
Here, we'll do one.
Ready? One, two, and three, four, five, six, one, two, three, okay.
Now, that's a big fat check up in there. You'll get the check. Congratulations.
I'm going to get one of my votes now.
Thank you.
One, two, and three, one, two, and three, okay.
And just so y'all know, I'm not stealing Mr. Jones's thunder here. I'm a board member of SMPDD, so because of that, I got to nominate them too, because I'm taking a little credit, just so y'all know.
One, two, and three, one, two, and three, congratulations.
Thank you.
In Beverly, can I take one second and just kind of explain a little bit on the scholarships? On behalf of the SMPDD Board of Supervisors, we endowed $300,000, I guess, about four years ago, and to date, we've given over $270,000 in scholarships in our 15 counties each year. Each county gets two scholarship nominees, and those funds are not derived through county funds, those are program income funds that SMPDD has generated. So, I just want to say thank you to Ms. Martin as my board member, and also to the county as a partner in our organization. We wouldn't be able to do this if we did not have the partnership with our county. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Next, on behalf, we recognize Mr. Ross Stinson, as he presents his future business plans to be located on Industrial Park Seaway.
Kind of a tough act to follow. I printed one of these for each of you. Say it one more time. Oh, I'm sorry. Sure will.
Your name is good. I got one question. Where's the fry on the onions?
I'm not going to answer that.
I don't need it, but I still need it.
I'm sorry. Ross Stinson and the.
It's really good.
Yes. And address on this is 13334 Seaway. And so, what I'm here for in this one, I'm going to try and keep it short, because I see your agenda, is talking a little bit about what we intend to do at this address on Seaway, which is basically going to be a warehouse, kind of storefront, and storage facility, all in one, but the key point, I think, that I want to interpenet, obviously, this is quite a big investment that we're making, and we're going to be getting into actual manufacturing of apparel, of clothing. I have a company, and this is where I'm going to try and make it brief, eight years ago, I formed a company with Jennifer Bavi called Southern Hospitality Supply. Why? I had at that point six restaurants, and people scrutinized food cost, the seafood. Oftentimes, you never think about garbage bags, paper products, office supplies, cleaning chemicals, and I found that when I really looked at how much we were spending in that area, we would be smarter to form our own company and sell for ourselves. Well, that grew into quite a business, and actually, with the help of SMPDD and SMCPC, working with Tina Taylor, and I started that four years ago, working with her to really develop SHS into the female-owned company that it is. And if you take a look at that second page, that's our capability statement of what SHS, which was literally a company that we started to serve our own restaurants, this is what it is now. And that's going to be the location of our warehouse, and it's grown substantially to where we'll have warehouse employees, we'll have delivery drivers, we'll have a sales team, we'll have an administrative staff. Then if that's not complicated enough, we realized that a big part of what we were able to do by being in the ability of one company was sell to the government, and I'm actually making a presentation that NASA and State Morning in that regard, to really further the development of the sales of what SHS, but then we realized that, you know, we're buying product from out of state, uniform product mainly, t-shirts, you know, uniform shirts, logos, that whole gamut, and we decided we wanted to actually become a manufacturing plant of that. So, we sought out, and this goes back two years ago, a company in New Orleans that I was familiar with. I used to work with mine at Hollywood and all these big companies that kind of had divisions like this. There's a company in New Orleans called FOPA. They've been around almost 40 years, and we're going to be bringing them to the Harrison County, to Gulfport, to be part of a new company that we formed called Coastal Prints. Coastal Prints will actually manufacture all of these in the warehouse that we're building, then SHS will be the distribution company that will sell these. And it's pretty exciting, so people tell me right now, and I'm an economics major, are you nuts? You're trying to do something like this, it just will take them a point in the economy. And, you know, the way that we're kind of insulated, if you take a look at the back page, if you flip over to the back page, the back portion, which that borders I-10, will be a storage facility which will help pay the rent. But the bulk, when you look to the front of the project, are two large warehouse spaces, and the added points, and I put these kind of down at the bottom of each of these details and key points, with what's happened now in Gulfport and Harrison County, and the port actually being available by rail to this location, a huge part of what they're bringing into the port is what we're selling, and we're thrilled that we'll be able to really hands-on be a manufacturing business that's geared in this way. And I've got people who are going to be working multiple jobs, you know, people that worked in restaurants will now find themselves working in a warehouse, and they're so eager to have that, and I'm lucky, I have people working, you know, and this will be employing quite a few people, but also, the idea that we're actually going to be making, I'm so frustrated when I buy things, and a lot of this is coming not from even in this country, and when it gets to us, it isn't what we wanted, and then we look like fools to the people we're selling it to. I'd much rather be in charge, kind of like how I do my things in the restaurants. I make what I sell, and I'm excited that we're going to actually be actually designing this, and this is a large, that first kind of detail point, 35,000 square feet is going to be offices, but 68,000 with additional warehouse space, that'll be some dry storage, that'll be some refrigerated storage, which there's a huge need for right now, and the ability to pull some of our products out of the port. So, it's just ironic, it kind of is bringing together a huge amount of what has just naturally happened in my business career, and I'm really thrilled to be working this, you know, and the idea of where this can go, I think, is unlimited. So, you know, without going on, I could go on and on, you know me, I can give you a stage, but all kidding aside, I guess, you know, the reason I'm here is to look as a tax abatement process. The last time I was in front of you was eight years ago, before we built the reef, and I think it's pretty demonstrative of what we've done on that particular coast in Biloxi, between the reef and the other restaurants that helped develop the boardwalk, you know, and everything else has kind of come along. And I guess I say that to say that, you know, this is something I intend 100% to follow through with, irregardless of what happens.
And you're looking at new jobs of 50 to 75?
Easily. Probably going to far exceed that as we're done, yeah.
Have you talked to the Development Commission?
Indirectly, indirectly, but I would love to. I would love to, yeah. And I have mentioned this, I haven't officially gone in front of the city yet, but I will be going in front of Gulfport, and they're aware of kind of what the direction on this is. There's a piece of this property as well that Tina's been helping me, we put a bid together, and we're actually looking at a possible government tenant on the property in a little fund that we have that sticks out on this side.
Normally, and correctly, Ken, if I'm wrong, but normally, you go to the city, and they'll tell you what or if, and how much they're going to do, and then they come back to the county, and we typically do 50% of whatever they do, right?
Yeah, and unfortunately, my ignorance there, I'll play, but I'll be going to the city and, you know, obviously then come back.
All right, tax exemption. We're done, we're done. If it's the same thing, we're done with it. Yeah, we do 50% on the tip, but the tax exemption, I said, probably, or it could be more.
Well, I was lucky to get more when I did the proposal for you guys with the REIT.
How many jobs? You said many jobs. That depends a lot.
In between 50 and 75 initially, and then it'll grow well over 100 as we grow, and that's not, I mean, I wouldn't be doing this if I didn't want to grow it beyond that level. And we've actually, in this drawing, there's a portion that looks like it would be a gym. I, that's going to be swamped, you know, it's nice that we can start in an idea, but that isn't as productive a use of the spaces I intend.
You're just thinking industrial tax exemption.
Yeah.
That qualifies under the state. Yeah, that could be more.
Yeah.
Excluding food taxes, that'd be 100%. Good guess. That's even better.
That's what I got with the REIT. I wasn't trying to be too overzealous.
You have something?
Yes. Have you thought about, because of storms and those sort of things, have you thought about the industrial park in Soshan?
You know, honestly, we're pretty set.
Did you look at it? Were you shown it?
I would hate to tell you the truth, no. But with this, it just, it's the way my life seems to happen, this just all came together at one point, and then how to make the best use of this, and it just seemed to be obvious this would be the best direction, and that's, I mean, literally how it happened.
I think some of that storage could go up there. I'm trying to sell.
Hey, we grow beyond where we are, trust me, I'll be looking. But that's, that's pretty much it.
Thank you, God, you did part.
Thank you. Appreciate it, thank you.
Next, on behalf of number four, order concurrent with the resolution of the Harrison County Development Commission authorizing and approving the sale of lots three and four, corporate court subdivision comprising approximately 2.79 acres of real property to.
Yeah, it's hard to say. Anchises Pharmaceutical LLC for the purpose of operating pharmaceutical manufacturing laboratory and office in a current occurrence with the real estate purchase offer attached here to exhibit B, and having a purchase price of $306,437.
Motion.
Motion.
Second. Second, a second discussion.
What are they going to be now? Making?
Well, she came to a board meeting, and most of us weren't science maids, science majors, but it's basically like blending chemicals.
Or compound.
Yeah.
Have you vetted the company?
Yeah, she's already in business in California, she's moving here, she has an elderly father, she's moving back, and she's tired of the politics in California and wants to come back home.
Were there?
Something going on right now.
It seemed like that there was something a few years ago in Mississippi about the compounds. I don't know.
I don't, I don't think it's compounding, it's blending. But, I mean, yes, we've, you know, we've done what we can, they filed a Mississippi company that exists in California, they want to move here, you know.
Could you do a little bit more research, maybe, on the compounding part of it? Do a little bit more vetting?
We can, I mean, that's what the board chooses to have us do.
I'll call the question. Okay, all in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed?
No.
No.
Motion carries. All right, five, order concurrent with.
Could you do a little bit more research maybe on the compounding part of it? Do a little bit more vetting?
We can, I mean, that's what the board chooses to have us do.
I don't know, call the question. Give a discussion, intermission discussion. Okay, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No.
Motion carries.
Item five, order concurrent with the resolution of the Harrison County Development Commission authorizing and approving the sale of approximately five acres of real property to, here we go again, EquipmentShare.com for the purpose of operating an equipment rental, sales, service office and supply lay down yard in accordance with the real estate purchase offer attached hereto exhibit B and having a purchase price of four hundred sixty-two thousand dollars.
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
This represents twenty jobs, this is a company that has over three thousand employees nationwide, it'll be a twelve million dollar investment on the seaway, and it's going to be east of where y'all are, where the trees still are. And we got to get a court permit because that's where the wellens were, so they know all that, so we've got some work to do still.
My only question is, with a lay down yard, are they going to keep a high fence or keep the appearance nice? You know, lay down yards can get messy.
Yeah, they intend to have that in the back, so they're exactly like Sunbelt Rentals and United Rentals, but they plan to have the equipment and storage on the backside.
They intend to, are you going to have that in the contract?
Their, their lay down yard on their site plan is in the rear of the property.
It says twelve jobs on the form, you said twenty.
It's twelve, twelve to twenty is what they put on there. They hope to grow.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion carries.
Item number six is order concurrent with the resolution of the Harrison County Development Commission approving and accepting a bid of central pipe supply for pipe materials to be used in the commission, commission's construction project to extend its water main extension on their Cowan Road Highway six oh three to Plant Watson, project zero two twenty-two. As per a bid proposal attached here to exhibit A in the sum of eight hundred, in the sum of eight four thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars, eight hundred and six thousand two cents.
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion.
Phil, that's y'all's project, right?
Yes, sir, and this is Mississippi Powers money, they paid for it upfront when we bid it, and there was, there was only one supplier bid, we just need y'all's approval to move forward.
On the backup, it says all prices are subject to fluctuation, so what does that mean?
We're, you approve it today, we're going to make the order today, we've been waiting for six weeks and held the price.
Okay, so if we approve, approved eight four thousand eight hundred and six dollars, then according to your backup, that's what it is right now, but it could be a hundred and eighty?
But they're, they're holding that price, they knew that we had to go through the process.
That's a bid price now, that's specified in the bid that, that that's only good for thirty days or forty days, the bid price should hold.
Correct.
But in the backup, supervisor letter, it says all prices subject to fluctuation.
That's a bid price. If that bid price changes, then you have a right to get out of it, I assume, tell legally, a bid is a bid. Now, they might specify that the bid is only good for a certain number of days.
We've, we've talked to them, we have a relationship with them, and they've held the price, I don't think that's an issue.
It's not in there, so.
Okay. Okay, is there any further discussion?
Bid price, the board revises the bid.
That's what I was going to say.
Yeah.
Superbowl Rocko, you have to say something?
I just would like to wait for our attorney maybe to do a little research on that, make sure it's written and that we have it in writing.
We can make sure that something's added to the contract that says they're going to do it for the price, but I think ultimately if the price goes up, I assume that the cost of the pipe, put it in, and then the board would have the, could be changing the bid, and you would have to go back and either agree to it or rebid it.
Sure. So we'll protect that anyway.
Yeah, so I think you're fine. You make sure something's added to the quote that says they're honoring that price before you sign it.
We can do that.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
Next, we have a consent agenda, item number seven thirteen has been placed on the consent agenda, same appearing to routine, non-controversial matters, and with all supervisors alike to agree.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion carries.
Next, we're going to go to number seventy-two, move it up.
Thank you.
Item seventy-two, it's order authorizing exemption for, from County Road, Abilom Tax and Slough and Stuage Taxes pursuant to Mississippi Code Annated seventeen twenty-one seven, as amended for property located eight fifty-four Howard Avenue, Biloxi, Mississippi, and identified as tax parcel number fourteen ten K zero three zero three four zero zero zero.
Motion.
Discussion.
My name is Dave Wheeler, one eighty-five Main Street, Biloxi. This is a request for fifty percent exemption on the old Wells Fargo Bank building in Biloxi that Mr. Spitter bought and is converting to fourteen...
Yeah, short term, fourteen short term rentals.
East shore.
If you can say it in your name, please.
I have Spitter. City of Biloxi has already approved it down here.
What'd they approve?
They approved five year, fifty percent.
Okay.
Which is the same thing that we submitted to the county. He's got his permit.
Today.
Today.
Final permit.
Final permit, he's been working on the building, you want to tell them a little bit about it?
Yeah, so it's going to be a, kind of like a high end, kind of, say like a short term rental or like a boutique hotel. So it's going to have fourteen Airbnbs, east shore, a chef in New Orleans is coming in to do it, it's going to be called the Bella. It's going to be like, really, I think like kind of high end chic for the town, and then I think we'll do it really well. You know, we'll have a bunch of employees that are actually working there, cleaning there, maintenance, but overall, I think it should be a great project.
They give it all of the suites, the upper level suites will have balconies, and the lower level suites will have courtyards.
Yeah, so during like Mardi Gras and stuff, everyone will have their own balconies, I think will be a great, a great addition to downtown Biloxi.
If I remind the board, this is only on the increased value versus what they spend, they'd probably be taxed at a hundred percent on what's there now.
This is the improvement.
Or just the improvement.
Plus it does something with an empty bank building downtown.
And it's named after your daughter.
It is.
Okay, is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks. Backup, tax accessory, okay, item fourteen, spreading up twenty minutes, person that changes for the tax accessory's office that's listed and on file with the payroll and human resources department.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item fifteen, order acknowledging receipt of and approving petition for decreases to the twenty seventeen personal property rule as recommended by the tax accessory.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion carries.
Item sixteen, order acknowledging receipt of and approving petition for decreases to the twenty twenty-one real and personal property rule as recommended by the tax accessory.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion.
All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion carries.
Seventeen, spreading up twenty minutes, person that changes for the tax collector's office as listed and on file with the payroll administrator and human resource department.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion carries.
Eighteen, order approval line item transferring the amount of three thousand sixteen hundred and fourteen dollars and sixty cent from zero zero one one zero four five zero one to zero zero one zero four nine one nine for the purchase, purpose of purchasing office furniture from Office Furniture Solutions LLC for the tax assets office in Gulfport Courthouse within budget.
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion carries.
Nineteen, order authorizing board president to execute the letter of authorization with D V C O data for the processing and mailing of the county's monthly vehicles tag renewal notice, the price has increased from seven cent to eight cent per car.
Motion.
Motion.
Second. Discussion.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion carries.
Twenty, order taken off the table, awarding a low bid for the baseball field lights replacement at the Three Rivers Elementary, Ballfields Project, Lambi Electric, Inc., for the LED stadium floodlights installation alternate, alternate number two, and total base bid amount of three hundred eleven thousand dollars based on the lowest and best bid total and authorizing the board president to execute the contract documents after legal review.
Motion.
Second. Discussion.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion carries.
Twenty-one, order awarding a low bid for the baseball field lights replacement at the Three Rivers Elementary, Ballfields Project, Lambi Electric, Inc., for the LED stadium floodlights installation alternate, alternate number two, and total base bid amount of three hundred eleven thousand based on, on their lowest and best bid total, and authorizing the board president to execute the contract documents after legal review.
Motion.
Second.
Second discussion, Jackie, you sure that it's your opinion that they meet all specifications?
Yes, sir.
And conditions and, and this?
Yes, sir.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion carries.
Order authorizing advertising for the emergency disaster provisional degree removal and deposed disposal services. Current, current contract expires December thirty-one, twenty twenty-two and can be extended for an additional twelve month period up to five years total as an alternate option as recommended by Jacqueline Turner.
I will say this one here, we've not had any...
Motion, let's get a motion.
Second discussion.
Yes, sir. We have, we have not had any problem with this company, and if you would like to extend it for twelve months, that's an option that you can pursue here, we just wanted to give you the opportunity with enough time to advertise it if you wanted to.
Later, you talking about advertising later if we extend the rest of the contract?
Right, if you, if you choose to extend for another twelve months, then we can consider this again in a year, but I wanted to make sure we had plenty of time and we didn't get caught where we didn't, where we hadn't decided on extension if you didn't want to.
You satisfied with?
Yes, sir.
But... I would like a motion to extend the contract.
Second.
Timmy, you, everything good?
Yes, sir.
You happy with that?
Far, yes, sir.
Oh, yeah?
Are we extending it for twelve months?
We'll let you know when they don't, though.
I figured that, we know you will, and you just said something.
I will do it in twelve months or...
The contract allows twelve month periods, so we'll, if, if that's what you vote on, we'll extend it for twelve months and then bring it up again in a year if you can see if we want to continue or advertise them.
Perfect.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Twenty-three, order accepting lowest bid for nine nine thousand one hundred dollars from D and P, Inc., for the Sheriff's Work Center, new generator, government system based on their lowest and best bid total, and authorizing the board president to execute contract documents after legal review by the board attorney.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion carries.
Twenty-four, order approving the following pay application of a hundred and seventy-six thousand nine hundred dollars to D and P, Inc., for the human service cooling tower replacement Gulfport payable from zero zero one one twenty-one nine two two, and acknowledging receipt of the following closeout documents between Harrison County Board of Supervisors and D and P, Inc., as recommended by Jacqueline Turner.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion carries.
Item twenty-five, order authorizing advertising for degree monitoring services, current contract expires May one, twenty twenty-three, and can be extended for one additional twelve month period as an alternate option as recommended by Jacqueline Turner.
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second discussion, but this doesn't, isn't it a little relative, right?
This is the monitoring, the other one was the collection. So this is the monitoring, and this one, we did just recently extend it for a year, so this one goes through May. We've had no major problems, but we have had a few hiccups, and the other one, the collection service, were very easily the low cost clear, but this one is more, everybody's kind of the same price, and we've had a couple hiccups. And so if you'd like to advertise for new proposals, I would support that, if you don't, we could plan on doing another year, and at that point, the contract would expire and you have that.
When you said a couple hiccups, exactly what I was talking about. They didn't perform?
They, they performed, we just had a few communication issues where they've come up with things later, like one of their invoices, they posted on their website and then came back and told us six months later that they wanted to collect and never sent it to us. Things, things that make me concerned when you're dealing with FEMA reimbursables. Nothing that's really been bad, but things that make me a little bit nervous.
I'd like a motion to add, pass for a new monitoring service.
This, they are under contract to go through this storm service or storm season, this will get us ready for next year.
You're talking about when this particular contract expires?
Right. It's just the process takes a while, so we're trying to get ahead of them instead of getting right.
Yeah, I'm talking about once they expire, once this contract expires.
Yeah, I'm in a motion to advertise when this expires, second.
Second.
Okay.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor of that amendment?
Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion carries. Item twenty-six, order approving the question to the city of Biloxi to vacate to Harrison County, the western one fifty, is it feet of McElroy Street in Biloxi at the youth dissension center located in section twenty-seven, township seven, S range nine, W, supervisor dissection one, as recommended by Jacqueline Turner.
Motion.
Discussion.
Can I comment on this?
I thought we'd already done it.
Maybe Tricia can help explain this. My recollection of this, back when the youth court was moved over there, my recollection is the city of Biloxi would not let us close that street, we had to put gates up where it could be opened in case of emergency. I don't know why we're vacating, this is just for utility purposes.
It's, what, what has happened is, we've, we've been talking with Biloxi and they had intended to vacate it to the county as a county street that would allow us to put the fencing and gates up, and AT and T at the time did not sign off on the paperwork, so they did not vacate it to us then. So we've been coordinating with the city and with AT and T to get them to agree to do their signature that would transfer it from Biloxi to the county.
That's not vacating it, that's...
Vacating, it means taking it out as a street.
Okay, I, I worded it to vacate two Harrison County, I may have worded that wrong, to, we need to transfer it from Biloxi to Harrison County.
Right.
Whatever the right wording is.
I think we better get an order of the city of Biloxi to make it that place to donate it to the county for county maintenance. If they do an order authorizing it to accept it, that's all you would need. It's under county jurisdiction, it's joint jurisdiction, but it's...
Okay, we were coordinating with them, they asked us to get this form together, the AT and T had to sign off on, so that's what we're trying to do with this one. But I could, I could follow up with them and get a different process if we need to.
I'm going purely from memory, but I don't remember them saying that street cannot be closed because of forsaken trees that have the gates up during emergencies.
And, and the eastern half has access to two parcels also, so this would just be the part that Harrison County owns north and south of.
I'll, I'll...
Probably table it.
I'll first, I should, I'll take it.
Figure it out.
Second.
Second, okay.
It's not an emergency.
All in favor of that subsequent motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Good, motion carries.
Item twenty-seven, order authorizing the assignment of awkward funds, awkward funding projects to consultants based on the tax summary list as recommended by Jacqueline Turner.
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries twenty eight order approving the payment of communication international invoice number F P one thousand two two four in the amount of two hundred sixty one thousand forty five dollars sixty cents recommended by Harrison County Emergency Communication Commission at the meeting in July nineteen twenty twenty two payable from zero nine seven two eight seven nine two two. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of their motion say aye. All opposed. Motion carries twenty nine order approving the sole source purchase of fifteen Harris C and nine five P twenty five portable radios programming charges and accessories from the Communication International Team for Fire Services in the amount of thirty two thousand nine sixty five fifty and approving the transfer of funds in the amount of nine thousand from one zero six two five zero six nine oh and twenty four thousand from one oh six two fifty six ninety one and two one oh six two fifty nine eighteen. Motion.
Motion.
Second. Discussion.
The, the only discussion on, on the sole source purchase, it's obvious that we're building a particular radio of sole source. Would other companies be able to provide a different radio that would function the same? When we talk about sole source, we're talking about somebody that only provides that particular function. Now, just, you understand what I'm saying, Pat?
Absolutely, sir.
I mean, it's obvious that if they build that particular radio, yes, they're the only sole source for that particular radio. But are there other companies that build radios that might be a little cheaper? That would function just as well within our system?
Not within our system, in the E D A C system that we operate under today. We're hoping that once later on that approved, that it's opened up more than, yes, but.
That you would have more options on the particular companies that are selling radios. I've always had a problem with that word sole source because I know there's more than one company that builds radios.
We agree with you and I think this is an issue that we've had over time and absolutely, um, after nine one, after nine eleven, the issues with communications and being proprietary this radio versus that radio, those were all issues and they're working towards this, but it's a process because of so much money that was already invested in radio systems, the counties had bought and so forth, so on. So to answer your question, right, not, not today, but in the future, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Number thirty, order proven travel from Brian Hen- Henry, G I P treatment provider to attend the fifth event annual Alabama Mississippi Social Work Conference in Meridian, Mississippi on October twenty sixth to twenty eighth. Twenty three estimated cost of nine hundred dollars.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of that motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries thirty one order acknowledging receipt of and spreading the warning ministry twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three notice of grant award agreement number twenty two S R G M S zero zero four AmeriCorps seniors in the amount of sixty nine thousand thirty one dollars for the retired senior volunteer program. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of that motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries thirty two order proven out of state travels listed.
Motion.
Is second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion say aye. Opposed. Motion carries thirty, the order proven payment of plan listed to pay from the toy count.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries thirty four order concurrent with the county administrator on the employment is listed and on file with the payroll clerk.
Motion.
Second. Second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Item thirty five order concurrent with the road manager on the form is listed and on file with the payroll clerk and personnel him resource.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion say aye. All opposed. Motion carries thirty six order spreading the warning ministry personnel change to the sheriff's office as listed and on file with the payroll clerk.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries thirty seven order rejecting all bids received for the surplus property as known as previous city of Deodoro Police Station, Deodoro specifically and approving re-advertize of the same. Motion.
Motion.
Second discussion. Would, I'm sorry, does this explain?
So the Deodoro Police Station?
Yeah.
The highest bid we got was half of what their base value was.
For purchase?
Yeah.
Gotcha, okay.
So I think we discussed, remember we, we discussed rejecting them and then re-advertize.
Happened to the city of Deodoro.
They.
First previous city of Deodoro.
That's why I was confused.
It's the previous city of Deodoro Police Station.
Previous.
Okay, so it'd be city of Deodoro previous police station.
City of Deodoro.
And many stories.
God, my word can do. Yeah, I just noticed, I was scared for that.
Brittany, now you're not, you're not the one that got it.
I got it.
Not far, we got it.
I knew it to you.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries all. Item thirty, order accepting the highest and best bid received for beach vending rental sites identified as G, G three A and G seven as recommended by the San Beach director and purchase. Authorizing the board attorney to complete the contract as needed determined in December thirty first, twenty twenty three for each site, high bid and for related purposes.
Motion.
Second discussion. Why, why these two are coming up? Are they different from the other?
That's the lady.
Is that what it is?
I just did it. She, these are the two spots. She was only doing it two right.
Are there any sites?
There were two sites that they, that weren't bid out whenever we originally went to bid. And they were the only two available, so that's the two that the young lady, you know, only one did.
All that worked out, okay.
Yeah, it worked out, yeah. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries, now we're regarding the share.
More in total, we have seven twenty four, thirty nine misdemeanors, hundred and thirty females, thirty two, uh, federal inmates and sixty five that clears their arrests.
Forty, order authorizing replenishment of the transport headed cash in the name of Matt Haley in amount of five thousand four hundred and forty five dollars. Payable from zero zero one two five three four seven five to bring to the account balance that approved ten thousand dollars.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Yeah, discussion, sure. Why, why a petty cash for a transport?
They travel all their, I mean, they, they travel all the state, yeah, they go everywhere, so sometimes you can't use a card, they have to use cash and all kind of different reasons.
But that account balance needs to be at ten thousand, right?
What?
That account balance should stay at ten thousand.
Well, we try to keep it ten thousand, yes, and we just, that's our, that's our threshold that we try to keep.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries forty one order approving the local purchase of one K nine with the handler training course at a cost of eighteen five, eighteen thousand five hundred from Southern State K nine LLC payable from zero zero one two hundred nine two two and authorizing county administrator to transfer these funds from zero zero one two eleven four six eight.
Motion.
Second discussion. Sheriff, can that dog speak English?
Sometimes you wish they would, but yeah, they can speak German.
I just wanted to fix, speak English.
Speak, people speak German.
I remember that you used to, you had to learn the command of the foreign language.
I still.
Decisions about them.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries forty two order proven payment to the U S Marshals Service in the amount of one thousand nine hundred two dollars and forty cents from Harrison County Sheriff's Office, share of the two zero eight G M C Sierra pickup bin three G T C thirteen J six eight G twenty five twenty twenty six payable from one zero zero one. No, zero zero one two hundred two nine, nine two one and authorize inventory clerk to add. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries forty, the order proven payment of the U S Marshals in the amount of which would be a nine four five nine forty five, four fifty four, fifty three from Harrison County Sheriff's Office, share of the twenty fifteen Cadillac Escalade bin one G Y S three M K J nine F R six nine five one one forty. Payable from zero zero one two hundred nine two two and authorizing inventory control clerk to add same. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries order order authorized the road department to remove the Morgan Building, model number two six, two four six zero two nine T Y C L S four, serial number two seven six eight five four located at the Sheriff's Work Center. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries forty five order authorizing the following line transfer from the sheriff's office budget.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of say aye. All opposed. Motion carries forty six order proven mileage reimbursement encountered travel for the following employees.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of that motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries forty seven order removing render down foot sheriff's officers assistant receiving clerk and adding Pat Mihaw, sheriff's officers assistant receiving clerk and authorizing. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Forty eight order authorizing disposable assets per attached list and authorizing inventory clerk to remove the same from inventory.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries forty nine order correcting the inventory adding back an item that was previously disposed, but is still in use per attached list and authorizing inventory clerk to add back to inventory.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Order authorizing the transfer in amount of nine thousand eighty nine dollars and ninety cents from the general fund zero zero one nine hundred nine fifty to zero to one zero seven zero 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 three eight seven, two percent unemployment comp fund to bring cash balances required amount.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries fifty one order authorized the reimbursement to the road fund one fifty zero 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 three sixty in amount of five thousand nine fifty forty five payable from general fund zero zero one two hundred nine zero two for site cleaning or training facility. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries order authorizing the payment to the Mississippi Coast College Center and Convention Center for reimbursement received from FEMA for damages sustained from Hurricane Zeta in the amount of one hundred three thousand three twenty five forty one. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of that motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries fifty three, not acknowledged, June twenty two, traveling procurement ordered as follows.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries fifty four order acknowledging receipt of a professional services contract for the audit engagement of fiscal year twenty twenty one and fiscal year twenty twenty two and authorizing the board president to sign same.
Motion.
Discussion. All in favor of that motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries fifty five order authorizing the reimbursement for road fund one five zero 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 three sixty in amount of eight nine one eight three twenty one for the work performed on the new complex site payable from the fifteen million dollar twenty eighteen bond fund three one three one hundred nine oh two. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion.
Uh, Timmy, you want to give us a quick update? It looks pretty good out there.
Yes, ma'am. Um, the site work is pretty much complete. We are waiting on about six weeks out on drainage pipe. Hard to get right now, concrete drainage pipe of the pad itself, you know, we had to do a, a five foot search yard, which is pretty low. It was approved last week to put all the settlements and everything and the weight of it, it's good to go to cut back down. We're just gonna start that this morning, but due to the inclement weather, the splotchy rain, we don't need to get into that this week.
Timmy, is the cost of that pipe locked in or is it?
Just maybe it's on bid. But if not, we'll hold them to the block. Yeah, no, it's, it's all good. Project's going good.
Thanks. Is there any further discussion?
The, the bond money, what, which, that's coming out of our, that's the big team.
That's the existing.
Few years ago.
Existing for two thousand eighteen. We haven't, we haven't done the second.
The next one, right.
In the process.
When are we gonna decide on that second one who gets to administrate it?
I think it's on you to go out.
Okay.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Order authorizing the reimbursement to the general fund zero zero one two hundred five four two in amount of one hundred and forty nine dollars and thirty three cents payable from the fire service fund one zero nine two fifty five four two for work performed on vehicles, on vehicles.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries order proven payment for the following claims.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries fifty eight order proving resolution to the regular special home set exemption rejected by the Department of Revenue for the year twenty twenty one. First and second district districts of Harrison County. Motion.
Motion.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion say aye. All opposed. Motion carries fifty nine order proving the increase in the sheriff's salary to one oh four, one hundred four thousand authorized by House Bill number one four zero eight passed in Mississippi legislative regular session twenty twenty two and reiterate any approval of the ten thousand dollar annual supplement for, to the sheriff that is authorized by section twenty five three twenty five the Mississippi Code nineteen seventy two, set these supplement originally approved January eighth, twenty two oh eight and authorized additional salary of five thousand dollars authorized by section twenty five three twenty five the level of Mississippi Code nineteen seventy two effective October first, twenty twenty two. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion.
You're welcome.
I didn't do it.
That's actually.
It was the legislature.
Fifteen thousand dollars.
Yeah, it's not us.
Is that state, statewide, all it to go?
Well, well, pass it, offer it around to your legislature. All in favor of the motion say aye. All opposed. Motion carries item sixty, resolution acknowledging receipt of from the management of House Bill number fourteen twenty seven and House Bill fifteen forty two passed in Mississippi legislative regular session of twenty twenty two authorized premium payments to eligible law enforcement officers and firefighters and authorizing the execution of state resolution. Motion.
Motion.
Second discussion, is that a one time, that's one time that they passed for?
We didn't, we didn't give any kind of supplements during COVID. Some counties did. But because of that, this is gonna be paid out of D P S. D P S is taking kind of the reins in this, gonna go county to county for everybody.
So that was my question is, what am I, so D P S is.
So if you have a firefighter that's working, like we have firefighters that work for us. So we wouldn't pay that person, they'd be paid by their main job at a fire station.
Gotcha.
If I pay them, we wouldn't pay them, so they're not on this.
City accepted, huh? Okay.
I just need to vote on it.
Pardon?
I just need to vote on that.[1776.81]
Yeah. Okay, all in favor of that, uh, resolution, the motion say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, six ones. Resolution of the boards, resolution of the board supervisor of Harrison County determining the necessities for invoking and authorizing grant to municipalities encountered by the legislator, legislator with the respective tax increment financing that's set forth in section twenty-one, four, five, one, Mississippi Code of seventy-two is, as amended, determined that public interest required at the board supervisor of the county review such amendments to the tax increment financing redevelopment plan Harrison County, Mississippi, nineteen ninety-seven entitled Tax Increment Finance and Redevelopment Plan Harrison County, Mississippi, nineteen ninety-seven, as amended and related, July twenty twenty-two. The program being conducted on September sixth, twenty twenty-two at T M, at, at ten A M at the Gulfport Courthouse, seventeen twenty, twenty-third Avenue, Gulfport, Mississippi, in connection with the tax increment financing redevelopment plan Harrison County, Mississippi, nineteen ninety-seven, as amended and restated, July twenty, twenty-two, for related purposes.
Motion.
Second discussion. I don't know if this is a proper term, but just a reminder that the board has committed to pay for half of the fire station that's gonna be in the Long Beach industrial park. Rough estimates, I believe one point three million.
I, I believe that was what we're talking.
Roughly one point three, and so we're talking roughly six hundred thousand dollars will probably be, y'all had agreed to paying half of that, so I don't know if that could be included in this bond, but we need to think about that.
Right now, we're just doing the, um, declaring that this area borders the redevelopment plan, is that correct, Mr. Holman?
That's correct.
But you said another amount of that, Tim, too, didn't that beat you?
It can, we have to amend the resolution if you want to increase it.
Well, that's why, that's why I was thinking, that's why I'm just bringing it up, now save all that.
You're on the wrong number.
You're on the wrong one.
Six one.
Six one.
The next one has the amount.
The next one has the amount.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, this is the, 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 the Tiff District had been done.
Yeah, that's, I thought we were on the bond.
No, this is just.
Oh, Tiff, uh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
This is just the, uh, establishment of the countywide Tiff District. Previous Tiff District was much smaller, most counties do countywide.
Right.
So they, they recommend that we do that. This is in preparation of the buggies.
I get it, yeah. So I just reading the twelve.
Senior moments.
All in favor of this?
It had nothing to do with that.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye. All opposed? Motion carries item sixty-two. Resolution declaring the intention of the board supervisor of Harrison County, Mississippi, to either issue general obligation bond of said county, issuing general obligation bond of said county to Mississippi Development Bank, or enter into a loan with the Mississippi Development Bank in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed twelve million dollars to raise money for the purpose of providing funds for financing certain capital projects in the county authorized under Mississippi, enacted nineteen nine one, nineteen seventy-two. Motion.
Motion.
Second discussion. Back to what I was talking about, I suggested we amend that amount to include that. However, that still does not excuse, the development commission is gonna have, uh, they have a dog in this fight and they can have pay for, uh, retirement of that portion of that bond.
And if I made.
Part of it, even.
That's actually in there. We needed, we counted six million for the new multi-purpose building, three for various other projects in district two, one for the sheriff's training center, which brought us to ten.
Well, if you got it.
And the extra two should cover that.
We have one more thing I think we should consider. I think Matt can help me with this. We, we had agreed as a board. Right. We agreed as a board to transfer, what is that, the, I turn sheriff's department to do jail? Matt, you wanna discuss that a little bit? As a party that we agreed to do, I guess we need to come up with the finance to maybe do that.
So the.
I don't know.
Currently, the, the new emergency communications building is under design. Uh, I don't think we have yet specified how that will be paid yet, but certainly a, a bond would be a, a big help to the commission.
Yeah, what y'all specified is that you had the money to pay for it. By my regulations.
There, there is limited funds in the account, yes, ma'am.
Okay, well, I remember distinctly y'all saying to you, Mr. Bailey, that you had the million dollars to pay for it, so is it more than a million or you actually didn't have the million dollars in the bank?
We, we do currently have the amount for the new building in the accounts, yes, ma'am.
Okay, then why are you asking for?
Because it'd be so much nicer.
You did include it in the, in the first budget for next.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, so we, we were gonna discuss that some more in the budget here in, coming up soon, uh, but as an alternative to spending that emergency cash, that would be.
Nice drive. Nice drive.
I was gonna say, how much do you have in the account?
The account currently holds only two point five. The new building will be one point one, that would cut by half the amount available for emergency repairs if we had a catastrophic breakage of our twenty-one-year-old system.
He's still at twenty-one-year-old system.
This is a, this is a resolution of intent. So if you want to amend this resolution of intent to increase the amount not to exceed, that means you have to issue the bonds, only that you will not exceed that amount, so if you think there's other projects, I think you might.
So when you go not to exceed, what, fifteen?
I'll say fifteen.
Four of that. But not that I'm supporting that. First thing goes, I'm, so just wanna get that out.
Bring in a motion to amend.
I'll move to amend that.
Make it fifteen, not to exceed fifteen, man, as opposed to twelve.
Might want to do an appraisal of your assets to, and their age.
You have to amend it.
Need a second.
Okay, so.
Second.
Get a second, Tim, in. Okay, then, further discussion?
Yeah, so we're gonna go out RFQs on who administers this, or would that come later?
On the bonds? We can do that later. Uh, but while we're on this subject, the board needs to think in terms of bond council, who does the board want to retain, retain, we've used brokers, well, in the past, there are others, but I mean, I'm happy with brokers, know they do a good job, far as I'm concerned. But you want to, pose us out on that, if you do that.
I'd say let's do that, too, y'all, good with that?
Don't go out, go out.
That's well.
Do it all.
So we do a separate motion after you finish this one.
Okay, we finish this motion, I'm all in favor of this motion. All in favor say aye. All opposed? Get motion carries, then have another motion.
Then I'll do a motion to go out for RFQs to include bond council and administration.
Second.
Second, in, in further discussion, and should I say, in discussion on that? All in favor of that motion say aye. All opposed? Motion carries item sixty-three. Order rescinding the general item number twenty-seven, July, they have twenty twenty-two agenda, the same being order acknowledging that no specifications were received on June ninth, twenty twenty-two to proceed with their reverse auction on the facilities and maintenance department equipment, pre-owned truck, bucket truck, and request approval to re-advertise as requested by the facilities and the maintenance director and purchase clerk. They're going to purchase through a low comparative bid price, so no need to advertise for bidding purposes, it falls under the threshold. Motion. Motion.
Motion.
Second discussion.
All, all that, saying, uh, specifications. Tim, what is that, being received on the department, pre-owned and requested, uh, in order acknowledging that no specifications were received?
None that, I mean.
I don't understand that, was there no bids or no, I don't, who did the specifications? I thought we did the specifications.
On a reverse auction, we, the first step, it's really a two-step process. We, we let them know what we're looking for, the vendors, and then they submit us their specifications, saying, yes, we meet your requirements, then we invite them to the reverse auction.
They meet our requirements, who, who set our requirements? That doesn't make sense, because you got different vendors that's gonna submit their specifications.
But, but.
So you don't, you could actually wind up, I don't know, that doesn't make sense to me.
I think what they did was, was later they, they said, we need a used bucket truck. And they asked the vendors to submit their specifications.
From those specifications, we would select the specifications.
And invite them to.
That's what would be bidded on, okay, I understand that.
So no vendor submitted.
But no vendor submitted any specifications?
No, sir.
You can't get on, you don't have specifications.
Then they know, a truck.
That's the thing, when you're dealing with the used market, you're only gonna get what they have. It's hard to put specifications on. On a used vehicle. I mean, that's not mine.
For facilities.
Yeah, you might, might want to re-advertise or to, to, to reverse auction, how much is the bucket truck?
Uh, there was no need to do the re-advertising, that's what they're saying, they bought one.
Oh, they bought.
They found one. That, that's under the threshold.
Okay, so we just rescind them with previous action.
Yeah.
Okay, in further discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye. All opposed? Motion carries sixty-four order authorizing the board president to sign and execute the following H B thirteen fifty-three M O U and forms and authorizing the establishment of the, of the new bank account for each project in accordance with D F A requirements. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. Who signs on this account?
Chancery Florida, just like every other county.
But each one of these projects have to have a separate.
Yes, ma'am. Yes.
In further discussion?
I should know this, but what's this one point five for Harrison County sports plaques? Can you remind me?
That is for Long Beach. For the softball.
E, number sixty-four.
That's for the softball field at Long Beach.
Oh, yeah.
The new, okay. I just never heard it called Harrison County sports plaques.
Which one?
Uh, E sixty-four.
Number E. The one point five million.
I've just never heard it called. Thank you.
Okay, is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye. All opposed? Motion carries sixty-five order authorizes sixty-five percent down payment in amount of five hundred ninety-eight dollars due upon receipt of purchase order to Megatron Security Inc., security door entry system at Francis Frederick Center, payable from zero zero two one hundred six four one. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Okay.
Discussion.
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm jumping just ahead. This one is sixty-five percent down to Megatron X for security door for five hundred ninety-eight dollars, and the one right after that is sixty-five percent down, but it's nine hundred sixty-nine dollars.
It's two different.
We have double doors, yeah.
That's my question.
Second.
A double door.
Gotcha. Well, I know it's two different centers, I don't have the doors with you.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye. All opposed? Motion carries sixty-six order authorizes sixty-five percent down payment in amount of nine sixty-nine fifteen due upon receipt of purchase order to Megatron Security Inc., security door entry system with the Lyman Senior Center.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion say aye. All opposed? Motion carries order proven travel for Kim Compton, Social Public Information Officer, ten ten, four hundred, four hundred and three, D. Fourth third, okay. We can simply leave it.
An R and A.
Two oh two, Colorado Springs, part of our August eleventh, twelve, twenty twenty-two, that's where it costs, two seventy-five. Motion.
Second.
Discussion.
Discussion, Kim, you'll enjoy that, that went on, that was years ago.
Yeah, I'm looking for, Alice, Miss Al, sir.
More discussion, Kim, you realize that's not a commercial plan.
Yes, it's a, it's a hard, there is no first class.
Bring some Dramamine, trust me. We're not aware of that.
Thank you.
Just saying.
Just saying.
Yeah, is there any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of the motion say aye. All opposed? Motion carries sixty-eight order proven total payable of seven thousand six hundred seventy-eight dollars and nine oh one sent to Harrison County School District for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-three run on payments, sixteen section land leased by Harrison County for Parks, Harrison County for Parks Department Office, payable from zero zero one five twenty-five thirty and authorizing budget amendment for the same. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion say aye. All opposed? Motion carries sixty-nine order proven payment of thirty-eight thousand seven thirty-nine to Harrison County School District for twenty twenty-two run on payments, sixteen section lands leased by Harrison County for city, issued building on the county bond, county bond road payable from zero zero one one hundred five thirty. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion say aye. All opposed? Motion carries seventy order proven sixteen section commercial lease agreement between Harrison County School District and Harvest Church for land situated in the southwest one fourth, the northwest one fourth section sixteen, township seven south, range eleven west, first district district, city of Gulfport, authorizing the board president to execute same motion.
Motion.
Second discussion, what, how, what is that? What is that facility?
Harvest Church.
Harvest Church.
But if it's between the school district and Harvest Church, why are we, what's up?
Well, apparently, we're paying the lease, but we're using the building. Or something?
No.
What is it?
And why is it?
Well, I would, and the lease.
We're not paying the lease, we're just approving, it's through the school board, it's an agreement between those two, we're just approving, just.
We're just approving.
Either we have to approve sixteen section.
You have to approve leases.
Just approving the lease between the.
The school district.
Turn who?
The church. The church.
We usually, when the school district has a lease with another entity, we usually concur with the school district, that's why should we.
Yeah, you are.
So we should, yeah.
Yeah, because I didn't think we.
No, it's not yours, it's not the lease. We concur, he's the lease, we can do something.
Okay. In further discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye. All opposed? Motion carries seventy-one order approval of sixteen section commercial lease agreement between Harrison County School District and Harrison County Development Commission for land situated in the southeast quarter section of sixteen, township seven south range eleven west, first district district, city of Gulfport, and authorizing the board president to execute same.
Motion. Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion say aye. All opposed? Motion carries skip for seventy-two, it did operate for seventy-three order proven waiver of infringement pursuant to Mississippi Code, enacted seventeen three one, for use of the Harrison County Fairgrounds and School District Center by the Coastal Mississippi Homeschool Sports Association on September three, twenty twenty-two.
Motion.
Second. Discussion. All in favor of the motion say aye. All opposed? Motion carries seventy-four order adjudicate tax sale of August thirty-first, twenty twenty, and August thirty, twenty twenty-one on tax parcel number fourteen oh nine C zero two zero three five zero 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 for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty taxes as in royalties and thus voided amniscio and for related purposes. as an earnings and thus voided amniscio and for related purposes. Motion.
Second.
This property had, it's cheated to the state of what it was exempt, should I have consulted Call House and some, so, so.
There in further discussion, all in favor of the motion say aye. Opposed. Motion carries seventy-five, order adjudicating employment of Tim C. Holman and Boris Holman and Associates to represent Harrison County and aid or assistance Hopkins Junior and Hopkins or B and Hopkins P L C to represent Sheriff Troy Peterson and Harrison County Sheriff's Department, the man of Thomas Julian Lopez against Harrison County, Mississippi, the Harrison County Sheriff's Department, Sheriff Troy Peterson, and John and Jane Does.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion say aye. Opposed. Motion carries seventy-six, order denying the claim of Thomas Julian Lopez for his alleged to have been sustained while in custody of the Harrison County Door Detention Center. Motion.
Motion.
Second. Discussion.
Yeah, why are we adjudicating employment after we're denying the claim?
We got, we, an attorney represents this fellow, so he submitted a claim, so we got employed, and we denied the claim.
So this is, we'll go court.
Yeah, there will probably be a lawsuit filed. He made both state law claims and nineteen eighty-three claims, so you have to deny the state law claim that starts the statute of limitations running again, that's why it's important to actually deny.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye. Opposed. Motion carries seventy-seven, order adjudicating authorized expenditure that's listed as necessary to advertise and bring into favorable notices the opportunities, possibilities and resources of Harrison County, Mississippi, including the county logo being displayed along with link displayed to Harrison County online. In order to.
This is the one that y'all have to discuss.
This one we need to discuss?
Yeah, number seventy, whatever amount you guys want to keep.
Oh, yeah, yeah, this is, so, I got you, so this is in reference to the Hancock Witness Sea of Stars for Mississippi Accord Event, B S seven thirty, twenty twenty-two in the form of local recognition of banner website, all printed and signage material.
This is coming out of escrow, I think Kim and Rebecca have committed to twelve thousand, if y'all want to share in that amount, we're happy to share. I think you and I have committed twelve thousand. So if y'all want to share, fine, don't, we'll make your.
Okay, so.
You need a motion.
You get a motion.
I have under discussion.
I'll make a motion.
Second, get that discussion.
Discussion, I'm sorry. Is this a private invitation only?
No, it's open to the public, can't get down there with people, it's for the, the show.
Oh, I thought, I thought.
Is that what they did, the drones?
Yeah, it's like lights. Oh, is that the light, okay, because there's another issue, there's another thing I think they're asking for money for, but it's a private fundraiser, okay.
But if I may, she finds a ladder on the back of, the options are two thousand, five thousand, and ten thousand.
You talking about sponsorship?
That's just like the packages, but we can do whatever amount we want, I think.
Okay, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, I think they're asking for that, the costs have increased.
I got you.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Just remember, you can't receive anything of value for donation. We got tickets and things, so you can't receive.
Oh, well, yeah.
So we should, but we don't have to.
It's not legal.
Okay, is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye. Opposed. Motion carries.
Second, money goes specifically, from my understanding, to the actual drone presentation, which is open to the public.
It's Wendy last.
I have seventy, order adjudicating authorized the spending true that's listed as necessary to advertise and bring into favorable notice the opportunities, possibilities and resources of Harrison County, Mississippi, including the county logo being displayed along with, with the link displaying to Harrison County online in order to provide access to the public of resources of Harrison County. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion.
Little discussion, I mentioned it months ago, we need to have someone to follow up and make sure whatever they commit to being on the website, on the whatever, was that something you were going to start doing, Kim?
Yeah, we, um, she sends me the contact information and I reach out to them, now you're right, I don't, I don't, I haven't been following up like past that to make sure they have actually done it.
Yeah, we've never done it before, we think it's very smart to keep track, because you never in advertising pay someone and not keep, you know, just a good idea, keep track of what they actually did so they follow through.
But actually, anything that we do, district one, follow.
Yeah, we make sure they add the correct thing, I just don't ask them back, make sure they use it.
And it's not their fault, it's not our fault, it's just if you don't ask, they would never do it.
Right.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye. Opposed. Motion carries, getting going around, it's favorite, tell me, I believe.
We do have one matter. We have one matter for executive session too, but we've got enough. As y'all know, I sent y'all a package from Per River County, you know, application to do some type of medical waste facility in Pickian, and they got up there, M D. Akito, and they had to notify Harrison County because Harrison County borders on Per River County in one spot, so they asked me to rush this, so they sent it to me, I emailed it to all of y'all just a letter, an objection to their medical waste facility. I believe it's in Pickian itself, so it's not something that's touching Harrison County.
My understanding is their board supervisors do not have a problem.
No, the board's in favor of it, they're actually applying for it. Just when they got there the last minute, they were told they had to go Harrison County no objection, so they asked me to prepare, and I do.
Motion to.
So we have a motion to authorize the president to sign the letter and express the letter on the minutes.
Okay, can you get a second?
Okay.
Thank you.
We'd like you.
All in favor of the motion say aye. Opposed. Motion carries, anything else?
We do have one matter for executive session when you're ready for the.
Okay. Okay, Johnny, have a.
Need to add one, you take it up.
Okay.
Bookkeeping personnel.
Okay. All right, athletic, everything?
Not yet.
Superbowl power, I'm good, Superbowl in one, Superbowl Rocko, Ms. Pam, who, Sheriff. Okay.
Ask him. Motion to go into closed session to discuss calling detective session.
Uh, second.
Just the board wants to consider, both of those are personnel matter involved with bookkeeping, which is clearly qualified. And then the other matter is the water development, which qualifies as a business development.
Skip motion.
And Mr. Morris is here, and the White Street, so the board members can tell you where they are in the process.
Motion to go into exact.
Second.
Yeah, all in favor of that motion say aye. Opposed.